gunman in Buffalo and a talk show host like Tucker Carlson are drawing on the same well, the same sewer even of ideas and anger and fear. And the central fear is that there are many people who are very worried about what the country will be if people who look like them don't dominate it numerically, aren't the default. And there are many people who are upset and who feel that there are too many people coming into the country illegally. That's the emotional wellspring of all of this, and they're all harnessing it in different ways. I think that the reason you see this kind of rhetoric, this style of argument spreading in Republican circles is because it taps into a genuine worry, and it's a way of generating engagement ratings and retweets. It gets people to contribute small donations online to politicians. It's a powerful and potent idea, even if it's wrong and even if it's sanded down to make it a little more palatable and to make it sound a little bit less crazy. I think when we see the sanded down version, the one that sounds a little closer to a broader critique of unchecked immigration, you start to legitimize the darker version a little. And I think it's all a process, but when you take a attenuated version of an extreme idea and get behind it and promote it as the truth, you suddenly inched a really big audience a bit closer to the much more extreme version that is out there on the internet waiting for them to find it. Well, Nick, thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Nick Confessori is an investigative reporter for The New York Times. On Sunday night, The Times reported that the suspected shooter was detained by police last year after declaring that he planned to commit a murder-suicide. But he was released a few days later and quickly fell off the radar of police. By Sunday night, all 10 victims of the shooting had been publicly identified: retired police officer Aaron Salter Jr., Roberta Drury, Celestine Cheney, Deacon Hayward Patterson, Pearl Young, Catherine Massey, Margus Morrison, Andre McNeil, Geraldine Tally, and Ruth Whitfield, the grandmother of eight.
The Daily is supported by Fidelity Wealth Management, working to help grow and protect wealth with tax-efficient strategies at fidelity.com/wealth. Investment minimums apply. Fidelity Brokerage Services, member NYSE. And by Magooch, online test prep for GRE, GMAT, SAT, ACT, and more. Magooch offers self-paced and live courses to improve scores. Admissions to college and grad school may seem more challenging than ever, but help is available at magooch.com. And by American Public Media.
The Daily is powered by the journalism of The New York Times and is distributed by APM, American Public Media. You can go deeper into the stories you hear on The Daily at nytimes.com/thedaily.
The 7:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council for May 16, 2022 is hereby called to order,
Ms. Price?
And Mayor Lee?
Here. And I call, Ms. President, Ms. Price will not be able to meet with us this evening.
and I'll ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Is Reverend Mark Turner here?
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
All right.
Here.
Mr. Best pitch?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Well, I'm going to call on my good friend, and I know he's always ready, Bishop Jamal
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Jackson. To lead us in our invocation. Thank you, Bishop Jackson. Please stand, and I'll follow.
Yes, that's what the scripture means, be also ready, right?
I got you. I know you know it.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Kind Father, here we are again, here on this Monday evening between these walls of concentration. We're here tonight to discuss business. We're here tonight to discuss celebration, but more importantly, we're here to discuss the citizens of Roanoke City. We would ask tonight that you would look upon us now, look upon us with favor, look upon us with justice, look upon us with kindness and with care. Father, tonight, we especially pray for those in the Boston area who have lost family members due to hate crimes and racism. We ask that you would touch them tonight. We ask that you would go to California, touch those families who lost a loved one on Sunday and as well as those who are wounded and injured. Father, we would ask that you would touch even those in Texas who have dealt with the same incidents and even here in the city of Roanoke, as we're dealing with violence every day. Father, we need you even more than ever before, but we're grateful in knowing that we can trust in you. So would you look upon this council tonight, look upon our mayor, vice mayor, council members, look upon the city attorney and city administration, and all of us who are here gathered in this room, those who are watching virtually, that we might be able to speak with peace, speak with a voice that is a clarion call for those who are needed in this city? And we will thank you for the results that are beneficial to all, regardless of race, regardless of orientation, regardless of social status, regardless of who we are and where we've come from. We all belong to you, and we are citizens of this great city. It is in thy name that we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Jackson, and let me say good evening to everybody. I think the first order of business is us coming out of closed session. Could I ask the member of council to make that motion?
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of city council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by members of council in attendance.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. Thank you. All right, let me just say council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RVTV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. All right, tonight, under presentations and acknowledgement, I want to recognize the City of Roanoke's 2022 Leadership College graduates, and I'm going to call on Mr. Joshua Johnson, our Neighborhood Services Coordinator, to assist with the presentation to the graduates.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for allowing us to take your time. So this is the 24th Leadership College Graduation that started this spring. This is a nine-week course, community leadership program that runs concurrently from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM each Thursday evening for nine weeks. If you want to talk a little bit about the college, would that be all right?
Thank you. Let me say that, and again, welcome to our Leadership College Graduation. Since 2003, we've been doing this, and the Leadership College is an annual nine-week community leadership program that runs concurrently from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM on each Thursday evening and is free of charge. Roanoke Leadership College has been designed to engage citizens in a series of interactive and engaging discussions and activities which enable participants to enhance their knowledge of the city and how the city operates. Participants explore issues that impact their lives, that impact the quality of life as well as that of each and every residence of this city. The interactive programs assist participants in collaborating with neighborhood organizations, community and business leaders, city officials, and city staff to improve the quality of life in their neighborhood and promote a stronger sense of belonging and community. Building upon their knowledge, skills, and commitment, participants of the Leadership College will begin to transform their neighborhood and ultimately our city. These 20 graduates?
Nineteen.
Nineteen graduates took the time out of their busy days to learn about their government. Well, thank you. Thank you for that, and to become resources of information to their neighbors and hopefully to become more involved in the city in which they live. They heard from city council, I think I was the first one that spoke to them, all right? Heard from the mayor, they grilled me on some things, but I think I came out of that okay.
They were gentle.
And they talked to us about the vision. I talked to them about our vision and future of our city. They personally met with the directors and managers of each city department, learning about the services they provide and how to access those services. They also had an opportunity to interact with neighbors from across our city who otherwise they might not have had the opportunity to do so. I can't thank each of you enough for your dedication to this program. Now, each graduate will come up and receive their certificates when their name is called, and I will let Josh do that. And Josh, how do we want to work this?
Yeah, we'd like to just invite everybody up there that attended, and I'll read out your names, if that's okay. So we have Adam Jackson, Adam Tate, Akinte Emi, who's a city employee, Alicia Merchant, Ben Crew, Cynthia Vineyard-Brown, Don Erdman, Evan Maxey, Jamal Jackson, Jay Finkel, Kathy Cohen, Lorena Wilson, Nicole Ross, Peg McGuire, Ryan Bell, Sunny Prevence, Tina Dow, and Wayne Farley. If you guys could come up a little bit, we'd love to give you your certificate and also take a picture with city council. We just really want to appreciate you guys have been a huge advocate. You probably know many of the faces that are here before you. They took a huge commitment coming up here, committing their nine weeks. You know they're all busy, so I think they'll be huge advocates for the communities that come back with this knowledge as well as advocates for the city and city council. So I'm going to give them their certificate, and that's okay, and then we'll take a picture real quick.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Adam, you want to pass it down? Alicia? Ten? Two quick on ABC. That was a process that I had. Don? Tom? Adam? Come on. Yeah? Lorena Wilson? And we had seven city employees that actually went through this, so huge credit to them for keeping their day job and coming here as well. Ryan Bell? Sunny? Lena? Wayne Farley? Thank you all. We'll come up here front, if that's okay, and we'll take a picture.
If you want to take it with council, what we do, we can add those, and I'll ask council to stand up in front of you, and we'll take that picture. Okay? Yeah, this far.
I'm in front, it's all short.
This is what's going to happen to you.
You need to do a count or something. One, two.
Kurti, that's here. One, two, three. All right, thank you.
Another one, come at me.
Get one with Josh in it.
All right, everybody ready?
Finished.
All right, one more.
Hold on just a second. You all look this way, Maripita.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know some of you have watched one of our meetings once in a while, maybe some of you have not, but at every meeting, the mayor starts off making an announcement about the vacancies that either exist or are upcoming on boards and commissions that the city council appoints. And he encourages, every time, he encourages people to step up and get involved, and it sure would be great if some of you folks that have been through the Leadership College now and understand maybe a little bit better how the city operates would listen to that and put in your application to help us on some of our boards and commissions that help us govern this city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Again, thank each of you very much, and thank you, Joshua, for your leadership and work to make this program happen. All right, now we're going down to public business, public hearings, and at the request of Catherine Rena to vacate a portion of Street Right-Away adjacent to 1037 Highland Avenue Southeast, consisting of approximately 3,920 square feet along 11th Street Southeast, between Highland Avenue Southeast to the north and an alley to the south of the subject property. Catherine Rena is the owner and spokesperson. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph, please?
An ordinance permanently vacating, discontinuing, and closing approximately 3,920 square feet section of Right-Away adjacent to property located at 1037 Highland Avenue Southeast. Official tax map number 4122022, as more particularly described herein after, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. It's noted that the City Planning Commission recommends approval, and I want to recognize, Ms. Renee, could you, do you want to have any comments, or you want to just come and be prepared to answer any questions? Seeing none, then I will ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. All right, thank you. And Ms. Renee?
Rena.
Rena?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Yay!
All right, item number two is a proposal of the City of Roanoke to consider an amendment to the aggregate amount of the FY 2021-2022 annual budget in connection with appropriations of funds from the general fund assigned fund balance to be used for transfers to the Capital Projects Fund and ARPA grant in the grant fund. Robert S. Kyle Jr., our city manager, spokesperson, and there is one measure we need to adopt, and that's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the assigned general fund balance, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 general fund, capital projects fund, and grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. I'll recognize the city manager, any comments that he'd like to make?
Nothing left or any questions. This is kind of a year-end process we go through, although normally we don't have CARES Act funding and ARPA funding which contributed to these balances as well, but happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. We're going to open the public hearing, and I have a person ready to speak on it, Ms. Barbara Derrick.
Yes, sir, Mayor. I appreciate that, and members of city council. I saw this in the newspaper. It's a notice of public hearing, and I believe that sometimes we can find magic under rocks and pull dreams from trees and use them as reality, and I believe there are still piles of money, and what I'm asking for, if that there is additional money, that we need to prioritize our first impressions when people come to the Valley, and that is with our infrastructure. In this list that I have, it says Parks Deferred Maintenance, 1,465,000; Star City Safe, 250,000; Public Safety Retention, 2 million; Gainsborough Neighborhood Improvements, 5 million; Neighborhood Initiatives, 50,000; Juvenile Court Renovation, 760,000; Diversity and Inclusion Support, 50,000; and other capital projects. Those other capital projects, Roanoke Valley Greenway has some bumps on it, and I am a Roanoke ambassador on the Greenways, and people are complaining about these cracks, these bumps, and when we report them, as we're instructed to do, we hear that there is no money to fix them. So it's that what I'm talking about, no money to fix them. Plus, there's, Roanoke is becoming a bicycling Mecca, both on-road and off-road, and when you get these bike apps, they tell you to ride on the Chestnut Ridge Loop Trail. While the Chestnut Ridge Loop Trail belongs to the Blue Ridge Parkway National Park, and mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway National Park. And mountain bikes, road bikes, no kind of bike, no kind of rolling, is allowed on Parkway is allowed on Parkway property except on-road. So if there's any of that discretionary funds left over, Mr. Cowell, if we could possibly look into terminating the leases with the Blue Ridge Parkway that we have with them until 2070, or subleasing that property back, then we can have legal bicycling on the Chestnut Ridge Loop Trail and extend our number of miles of trail in the Roanoke City. So that's my ask. It's for that other capital projects, 252,378 dollars, and anything else that you can find. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard on this matter?
No, sir.
We'll then close the public hearing, and I will ask council if they have any questions. Ms. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Dirk, did the Roanoke Times, were they rounding off those numbers going to the next million? Because I'm looking at like 4.5, you said 5 million for Gainsborough. Did they just round all the numbers up? Because they're a little bit different than what we have.
Yeah, it was the advertisement that ran.
It did.
Yeah, it actually had.
Yeah, I was gonna say that 400, $500,000 is a big difference.
Yeah, so what you have in front of you is the actual amount.
Yeah, okay, alright, I just want to make sure. Thank you, Ms. Dirk.
I do believe that that was sent in to the Roanoke Times.
Yeah, Mr. Cowell explained it. Yeah, I just want to make sure those are not the numbers that we have, and a lot more, but thank you, Mr. Cowell.
Alright, any other questions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to call a roll, please.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you all. Alright, item C is other business, a presentation of the Peacemakers Incorporated to provide an update on its initiatives and activities. It's sponsored by the Mayor and the Vice Mayor, and at this time, I'm gonna call on Sean Hunter for his presentation, and Sean, we got about 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Clerk, City Attorney. Thank you all. I'm here on behalf of the Peacemakers. I'm the president of the Peacemakers, we have been in existence now since 2015. Basically, our reason for coming before you today is to ask for additional funding. I think recently, a few months ago, you know, an advertisement was put out by the city listing that they had grants available for the violence interrupters and some other violence issues. But we had put in for the second one, which established that it was 25 to 50,000 dollars, and we explained who we were, interrupters, violence interruptors, and did all the paperwork that we were supposed to do, submitted everything we were supposed to submit. Unfortunately, it came back, we was granted an award, but it was a mini-grant, and we just felt that, you see who we got here today, the Peacemakers, and we patrol right now a lot of our city at no cost. We're not asking for no cost for that. However, we are asking for funding to be able to continue what we do. And additionally, any of you all, if you've been hearing about all of this, it's a group called the Interrupters, and it's based out of Chicago, and it's based out of an organization called Cure Violence. It actually was a doctor that looked at it, that basically made it, and he looked at this as an infectious disease. And that's what we look at, these hotspots that we got in the city as infectious disease spots. And so we feel that the only way that we're gonna cure these diseases in these infectious diseases spots is you got to go where it's at, in the streets, in the streets. We need to go in the streets, and that's where the Peacemakers take it to. We knock on doors, we intertwine with the residents. They love that we come to their houses. We now got residents that are afraid to come out of their houses. We get phone calls from elderly women that say that they getting robbed coming from the dollar store. That makes me feel sad, it makes me feel bad and sad, because I know we can do something about it. So I'm asking you all to take a good look at what we're doing with this funding for this violence interruption. You know, we don't want just everybody to apply just because they fit the criteria for it. The money needs to go to those who really mean well in the community. Give those of us who've never had a chance, give us a chance to prove ourselves in our community, because we are the ones being afflicted by this violence and this senseless crime. We are the ones being afflicted by it, we the ones that live out in these streets, we the ones that hear these sirens every night, we are, and we tired of it. So everybody's just been sitting around waiting on a pile of money to be dropped. We're not looking for that, but we are looking for structured funding to let us do what we need to do in our community. We know that we are hurting, the police department is like 70 officers short. They need community help. It's not gonna happen in the classroom, sorry to say that, it's not gonna happen in the classroom. We do need to teach our youngsters, yes we do, we need to guide them straight. But right now, it's important that we get in these streets, very important, that we get in the streets right now. It's a cry from the community everywhere, it's a cry from the community, and y'all hear it. But I just don't want the ones who just like vultures, just flying around or just chasing money. I want people out in the streets. There are organizations that will go out in the streets. Every peacemaker in here is trained in conflict resolution. Every peacemaker in here is trained in beef mediation. Every peacemaker in here is trained in CPR, self-defense. We got trained individuals right here in this city, utilize us, back us, see what we can do, and you can measure what we do, because every day wherever we stand, if there's not a murder, that's success. If it's a week, that's success, if it's a month, that's success. So that means we need to perfectly station ourselves where we need to be at then. But we need to try everything that we possibly can, and we have been overlooked. A lot of us have just been, organizations have just been overlooked because we don't fit the criteria, whether it's 501(c)(3), we're not known in the community, we don't have a professional grant writers. That's wrong to deny, because our stuff may not sound as professional as someone else's. But we the ones that live in these streets, and I sincerely, from my heart, ask you all, give us what we need, let us go out there and do what we say that we can do. And we just now beginning to start, right now, we started a junior Peacemakers. I want my sister-in-law to stand up, Monica Rich here. Y'all youngsters stand up, what's this, Monica, look at these. They willing to go out there in the street because they are tired of violence, kids. So they want to join the Peacemakers, because they tired of violence. Y'all gonna have a seat, but thank you all, but we have to do something, we have to do something, we really do. But there are various models that's around different states, as I was saying, they got the interrupters pretty much everywhere. So they are utilizing the interrupters, they are utilizing ex-offenders, people that know the street but then they came out, they're not living the same life. They are ex-offended because it means they don't do that no more. Ex means you don't do that no more, you don't participate in that criminal behavior no more. They have changed their lives so they didn't been out on the street, they didn't felt it, they didn't seen it. I done shot a gun before, I done done violent things before, a lot of us have. But as you grow older, you change, and you don't want that kind of environment to be around your children. We owe them a duty to keep them safe, and I express this to the men in Roanoke who may be looking at this. We, as men, have a duty to protect our women, our children, and the elderly. We have that duty, we owe that to you all. And so I'm not afraid to go and knock on the door and to talk to the gangbangers. I'm not afraid to go out in the street to do what we do, and people worried about us being afraid. We love our community, so if I must die in the middle of trying to do what I do, I did it, but my intentions was good. So none of us are afraid in here, we're not a vigilante group, but we love our community because we know that when we going out there in our community and we telling them, hey, we are not law enforcement, we're not the police, we are here to stop violence. When we hear a fuss going on, we can jump in between it and stop it just like that, because we are trained to do that. So what I'm asking, what we have come before council for today is to ask you all to take a look at it. I don't need to quote no numbers, if in private we need to sit down and talk, I'm asking you all that you increase what you all offered us and let us go out here in the community. I heard this lady speak about the ambassadors on the Parkway. That's what we need, ambassadors that we can put in different quadrants that are trained, but that's their job. And y'all must understand, sometimes you got to pay people, you got to pay people, you gotta give them a stipend to be out there, a reason for being out there, make it a job for them. This is our community. And one other thing before I go, I just wanted to say this because this been coming to me a lot, and because when we go around and we knock on doors, every time we knock on doors, we have more women than men to say, how do I join the Peacemakers? Because women are fed up, they tired of it, and they getting out there, I think we got more women here now than men, and it's sad. And if y'all want to know about evidence-based with us, right here, where I got my captain, Josh Blake, right here, if y'all knew a few years ago, he apprehended, the police was chasing the individual, and he apprehended the individual, handcuffed him, and handed him over to the police, and went to court to testify to secure a conviction because we needed to get that violent individual off the street, and the Peacemakers did it. There's documentation, what we done done down at the market place. We have gotten in between situations that could have escalated to violence, but we got in and talked to them. So we're asking sincerely, we are here, y'all see that this is real. Let us get out in the streets and do what we supposed to do, we tired of this violence, and we want to make our community a safe and decent place. And if anyone has any questions for me at this point, I'm free to answer, thank you.
Mr. Hunter, you emphasized that, and I think this is very important, that the Peacemakers convey and the community recognize that they're not enforcement. My concern is sometimes you can be confused out there, and I would hate for somebody to get tragically caught up in something where they are considered police officers or taking the place of police. I mean, are you making the point, you made the point, and I think I'd like to just, to make sure that that's clear with members of the Peacemakers, because they're not enforcement, and they have to be cautious in doing that, because there's some dangerous people out in the street right now. Are you, are they familiar, they understand that?
Yes, sir, everyone understands that, and we, if you look at our flyers, we make that perfectly clear that we are not law enforcement. As I said, and we also have a curriculum called, we are trained in the knowledge of self, knowing our people, because we can talk to one another, not nothing racist, but we can talk to one another, and somebody may think that we've been loud, but this is the way that we talk. Somebody of another race may think that we are being aggressive, but that's the way that we talk. So we are trained, everyone is trained on how to deal with people. We're trained on situations like that, and again, we go to doors and we knock, and the first thing we do is let them know who we are, that we're not law enforcement. If we see somebody smoking weed, doing whatever, that's none of our concern. We give them our flyer and we let them know why we are there. We are there to, if any violent situations escalate, we can get in and de-escalate it, and that's all that we there for, not judgmental, I mean, we are in Lansdowne. We have no problems if we gonna knock on doors, that's our family. So they just want somebody up there, mostly the women and the children need somebody up there, because we know that 90% of the people up there are good people. It's just a small handful that cause a ruckus every now and then, and gunshots are fired, and every now and then, somebody's getting shot. But we need to be in there to stop it, and I mean, us being there, our presence is a deterrent to crime. Presence itself is a deterrent to crime.
Alright, well, I just hope that you all will take advantage of the grant, the mini-grant that you have, and work that, and then let's see some results of that, and then we can talk even more about how to grant funding and how all of that continues.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Hunter, and I want to thank the Peacemakers for what you do. I know that it's not easy, being out in the streets is pretty dangerous, like the mayor said, it's very dangerous. I was doing some canvassing on last Thursday doing voter registration, and a young man asked me, who are the Peacemakers? So I know you're over there.
Yes.
This was in Lansdowne.
Yes.
So my question is, how, you can't be everywhere all the time, do you have a routine? Do you have a system on when you go, or is people just call you when they need you? Can you explain to me how that works and what we should do?
Well, basically, since we have been just on our own with no funding, what we normally do is on Sundays, Sunday evenings, I have my captain, Josh Blake, he'll choose an area that we want to canvass, and normally it's a hotspot, that's listed as a hotspot. So we choose that area, right now, we don't have a van, so we use multiple vehicles for the Peacemakers to get to our destination, and we go and canvass a particular area, so they know that we done hit that spot. Now, what our plan was, which I can't get all into, was basically to be assigned a certain area that a way y'all can measure our success or failure, and, you know, in a hotspot. Y'all can measure our success, just let us get in there and set up the way we need to set up, and make our people feel comfortable that we are there, because for the most part, as I said, most people that live in these houses, they want to be safe, period. Nobody don't want to be living like that, and our children are getting traumatized by hearing these gunshots. And a whole lot of people don't think about that, I mean, just by them hearing it, they don't know how to speak out on how they feel because they don't know, but they know that they are afraid, and that is wrong. So we have work to do, and I thank you all for definitely, definitely being concerned about our safety, but that is one of the things that we are definitely on top of, and at the same time, we are definitely, definitely know that we got to still go out there. And I have the people, everyone signs waivers and everything, but we never had a situation like that because we don't go and try to enforce nothing. And so you'd be surprised that two people get in, and this is what we know, two people can get in an argument, and they get ready to go to blows. One of those people are hoping that somebody jump in. One of them are hoping, even the one that probably got the gun on them, man, I hope this guy don't get me to make me have to do, and just take one person, hey, man, come on back, and that guy, man, I'm glad this guy came up in there and stopped this. It's just as simple as that, it's just how you know how to handle situations. And so we don't go in and jump out there without training, without training, thorough training. I mean, everybody here, before they are out in the street, they must be certified with a Peacemaker certification before they hit that street.
I understand, I appreciate that, I appreciate what you're doing. I mean, I was over there knocking on doors, because I, you know, it's like they're people, but I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for answering my question, I just wanted to, what kind of system you had and how you were able to do it. So I understand what you're doing now, thank you. I think, Mayor, I think.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. I just wanted to ask about your plans for the funding, where you mentioned you didn't get the long-term part of it. Was there anything in your grant that you have for sustainability to mark your success? You mentioned measuring your success.
Right.
Was there anything in your two-year plan that would have been able, that the city would have been able to measure what you were trying to do with the funding?
Yes, because the question was, as I was just saying, that they was gonna assign us a particular area. If it's a hotspot, we know if it stays hot or it can cool down. And so nine times out of 10, if we present there and it can cool down, most likely it's due to our presence. And so what I mean by measuring where you at, we looking at, and also, we keep documentation, or any fights recorded, police officers called, so you measure success by stuff from that, and then, you know, whether it's by month, several months, or year, or whatever. So we definitely, as we are out there, we keep documentation of everything that we do, people we talk to, the housing units and everything. But, you know, for the most part, I think that the people, as of right now, they've been very receptive, I mean, receptive of us. Nobody has, other than one guy asked me, was I the police? And I told him I wasn't, I said, but you know what, when I was younger, I wish I was the police, because that was my desire to be a police officer, but now I'm a convicted felon, so, you know. But, you know, we just got to encourage everyone, we are not anti-police, against the police, but we are not the police. So we just make that distinction clear, but when there is time to call the police, we will call them.
So you will be able to use the mini-grant that you were granted to build on, to look to... to, um, next year, to apply, reapply it if there is such a opportunity to do so?
Well, Ms. Moon, to be perfectly honest, I don't think that the mini-grant that we receive will last us to, well, I know it won't last us to next year. It, it may last us two months at the most. It may last us two months. That's how minute it is. And, uh, basically me to be able to move the peacemakers from one part of the city to another because we canvass and we move as a group. And also, we had a van that was donated to us, but it was donated to, but we didn't know that the motor was kind of, and the motor blew up in it. And so right now, we don't have that kind of transportation where we need to move collectively. And I try to do everything, uh, professionally. We look professional, you are professional, and when you come in the community, that's what they get. Professional service, we are protecting our community. And, uh, we're not there to judge anyone. Basically, it's just that we're there to try to stop the violence. But the funding would have been on the, so we have a headquarters. If you all, we have a firehouse that's on 514 24th Street. And so you got to know that, that firehouse, uh, we got electricity, we got water, we got everything. And I mean, all of this goes into everything because this is our headquarters for the guys. And now, you know, I'm, I was bringing guys in because I want to put them on 24-hour call. And where I have guys come in and live in the headquarters, it's like the firemen used to live, and they go on shifts.
Right.
And so I'm training these guys. You know, we deal with a whole lot of stuff around the community, but it's a beautiful thing if we are able to execute the way that we need to execute.
Well, I just pray that you, maybe some mechanic is out there.
Yes, ma'am.
That will give you a motor.
Yes.
For your van.
All right.
Yeah, um, Mr. Hunter, I just have a follow-up question. So, so you all are do, you, you're, you're trying to do a stipend for the, the peacemakers?
Not the entire group. It's just like maybe two or three men that's going to be stationed in, that are, I mean, that's right here with me and, and including me. I got to put my top guys.
Right, right.
Certain high crime area. And then, like I said, on the weekends, the rest of the group, they go and canvass and still covering the city. And I would love, as I said, the young lady back there was speaking about the ambassadors. It's sticking in my head for some reason, but, you know, we need to get ambas- where they, in the interrupters, they call it, uh, credible messengers, but we are rather, ambassadors sound, sound much better in certain parts of, uh, different quadrants of the city and they do their work from out there like that. And so it's just really building.
Right, yeah.
And growing the group.
Well, you, yeah, and, and, and like in Chicago and some of the other areas, I know that they are paid. They are paid.
Oh, yeah.
Um, because they have to be compensated to do that kind of work, but that, I was wondering if that's what your program is trying to.
Yes, we wanted to stife, uh, give a stipend to three people, um, and, uh, and these was going to be, they was going to be employed to do certain things, uh, but like I said, I just can't say that over this.
Well, yeah, that's fine. And, and I can always follow up with you later because I, because you did say that you could quantify, which is important because, you know, with that sort of money and, and you have to, to report something.
Yes.
But I understand that, that, um, you do need a certain level of funding in order to, to, to implement the program the way you want to, but, but thank you for answering my questions.
And one of the, and training also, uh, these, you know, uh, the new members, they come in, they get trained. We got, uh, nurses, uh, we got different people that's in our group. I don't want to point them out because everybody just want to be a peacemaker today, but we got professionals that's in our group. We got ex-offenders that's in our group. We got grandmothers and grandfathers in our group. And so everybody is excited about getting out there and I know that, you know, the women, when they get out there and, uh, uh, they can touch the young girls and the women and help them out. It's people that we can't touch and we deal with the men. But yes, uh, we definitely are anxious to get out here and, and do what we need to do in the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a follow-up, just one other thing.
Yes, ma'am.
And based on what Trish, my vice mayor just said, are you all working with the reset team? Uh, I know they have, uh, a group that goes out during the time of violence, volunteers and they're seeking volunteers.
Yes.
To work in collaboration with them. Are you all working with them at all?
Yes, ma'am. We work with everybody. I got, uh, two of my peacemakers that volunteer permanently with the reset team. Uh, you know, the reset team, they pretty much, uh, go after the fact, after someone has been, uh, either murdered or shot or that area and they go and talk to them. We are a preventative, we are a prevention group. Our goal is to, we don't want to see another funeral.
Yes.
You know, that's, we trying our best, we don't want to see another funeral because all you seeing is kids. And it's, and it's sad, it's, it's, it's terrible to our city. But as I said again, we speak about that infectious diseases, those hotspots that surround in the city. The only way you fight it, the one, only way you cure it is you got to go out there where it's at, you know? We do have work to do in the classroom, but right now, at the stages that we in right now, it's in the street. We got to be in the streets.
And do you also work with Josh Johnson with Neighborhood Services, uh, to collaborate, uh, from that standpoint?
I haven't, but I would.
And getting out into the community?
Love to, uh, uh, connect with Josh. Uh, I haven't, uh, but we are willing to work with anybody to reset. We even worked with the, uh, the, the gang, uh, youth commission.
Yes.
Uh, we work with them, so we willing to work with anyone. So that has never been, uh, issue, but we are here, somebody calling to say they want to walk around the community and, you know, I send, I send volunteers or I go myself.
Yeah. Maybe that should be a start as well, working with the Neighborhood Services.
Yes.
Uh, coordinator, as well as, as you said, with Chris Roberts.
Yes.
Uh, to get things done in the community.
Right.
Working together, then trying to.
Yes.
Work apart. Yes, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any more questions?
Mr. Hunter.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hunter, for what you're doing in our community. Uh, I would like to know, how many members are in your group?
Well, as of right now, this is not all of the group. We actually have 50 members.
Okay.
Uh, that are signed up. Uh, a lot of them work on night shift and other shifts and some couldn't make it be, uh, just due to, uh, a short notice, but it fluctuates, uh, you know, because we have a volunteer sector of it also. So that really fluctuates from time to time, but I, I have noticed even in the past, when we are active, we grow. When we're not active, we just fall off. But when we are active, we, we really grow. People get, you know, involved and, I mean, this could just touch every quadrant of the city that, and that's, that is our goal.
Okay. And also, are you getting the church, the churches involved in our community?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, most definitely. We have been, uh, recently working with Refreshing Bishop Jackson's Church, uh, and we are definitely, uh, extending our, uh, open arms to any other church that wants to work with us, you know? And I constantly tell people, they don't have to classify themselves as peacemakers. They can be the Hill Street Baptist Church peacemakers, the Refreshing Church peacemakers, but that's what all of us want is is peace.
Yeah, because I was thinking with the transportation, maybe they have vans that you could use.
Yes.
And if they're partners with you, maybe they.
Right. Great idea, too.
They're vans, too.
But, you know, you got to recognize that when that comes to that, uh, insurance factors, which we, we have our own insurance, we still got our insurance, we just don't have the van, but, uh, so all of that plays a part sometimes and, uh, uh, wear and tear, so it still is going to be a cost associated somewhere. And so, you know, we prefer to try to get someone to donate one to us so we can take responsibility to it. So we don't want to break friendships behind a van or using somebody's van or they, the van, um, hopefully not get shot or something like that. You don't, you don't want nothing like that, you know?
Mr. Call.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean, and thank you all for being here tonight. Uh, just a couple of follow-up questions. Um, I wanted to, to bring to everybody's attention on your flyer, which this is excellent. Um, at the bottom, there's a phone number. And is this your, basically your hotline that people can call?
It is, and that was another thing, sir, that we wanted to do with the funding, uh, wanted to get a phone. And I didn't have one, so I had to use my own personal number, which is going to be tragic for me.
Well, and, and I, I can, it's understandable why you wouldn't want to use your personal phone, phone for this. You'd need a dedicated phone and, and, and I would also think that you would want a number of, not only, uh, mobile phones that your, uh, your patrol people could use, but also when you do your canvassing, particularly if you're in different, I mean, you may all be in one section, but you may be in different sections too and you need a mode to talk with each other. Um, do you all currently have walkie-talkies?
Yes, we have a few walkie-talkies.
But you could use more of those, right?
Yes, most definitely.
Um, so a dedicated line, um, and phone number would be helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for the people listening out there, I mean, one of the nice things about a presentation like this is you can state what your needs are.
Right.
And I know we've talked about, uh, the merits of a van.
Right.
Uh, we've also talked about when you're doing a concentrated patrol in an area, let's say Lansdowne or Jamestown or Villages, Lincoln, or Indian Village, um, or even just a corridor.
Right.
Um, that, uh, something that's not as, um, that's easier to navigate, like a moped or a scooter.
Or scooter, yes.
Um, so I think some funding, um, either to purchase those, but I'm saying this out loud so that people in the community, um, know that you are a nonprofit, they can donate things to you.
Yes.
But you, like any organization, if you receive a donation, you want it working.
Mm-hmm.
You don't want high repair bills. It's like, you know, thanks for the van, but you could have told us the motor was out, the transmission.
Exactly.
Was nearly out, the tires were, um, bald. I mean, that's the worst thing a nonprofit needs is a donation that's not worth anything.
Right.
And so because of what you're doing, you need something that, that may be used, but, but it works.
Mm-hmm.
And you're not then burdened with those extra repairs. Um, could you tell us a little bit, let, let's use for an example, because I think you're spot on, and, and we have seen in the last year so much like a, a concentration of violence in Lansdowne, in Jamestown, in some of our housing communities. So I think partnering with the housing authority is really important for them to know that you're there, um, that you know they ha- that you have their support.
Right.
You have our support. Talk, tell us a little bit, describe for us, um, what that kind of patrol of those areas would look like? Because I know when you and I have talked about this, we've talked about a day and a night.
Right.
And then, and then, could you also describe, and I can come back to this, could you describe how you go about de-escalating a situation?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so if anybody can visualize Lansdowne, we're going to be up top on Delta. It's like a little U circle. So my plan was on the day shift, I was going to have somebody, um, during the daytime, is going to be on each corner. One person is going to be down the further end and one person all the way up like close to Shenandoah Village. And our job on that top area is every hour you walking the entire top section and middle section. And I got a peacemaker that lives in Lansdowne that's going to be on the bottom half and their job is to patrol down it. So basically what I'm saying, with the red shirts on, you constantly walking around, speaking to the neighbors, elderly people love it when they sitting on the porch. They want to stop you and talk to you, you got some, ma'am, I got to go. I'm sorry, but they just want to talk to you. And, you know, but they love that you are out there and they feel so good and they want to ask you questions. They want you to come up on the porch and, and I had a lady, one day she was waiting on me with some, something to drink. I got, I saw you walking, I got something for you to drink. I said, I'm good, ma'am. But they just love that interaction and they know why we out there. And so basically it's this, is that that will be all during the day. So I, I haven't considered how many hours, well, it's going to be four hours, six hours or eight hours for these men to be out there. Then us, a second shift was going to come on and we was going to put the same, but these ones, when it get dark, they got vest on. And the, the reason why we was talking about the mopeds, it's easy for them because it's, it goes up a hill. So if one guy needs to get to another section, they can just get on their moped, go up there and they got the loose, uh, trunk on the moped, you got your helmet and stuff like that, and you patrol, you lock your moped up and you patrol up. And that's the way that it was going to be organized and I, that's why I would say, just give us Lansdowne, we come up with a, a action plan, which we, I drew one up and sent it to you and let us operate it. As far as de-escalating the incident, every incident is different. You hear two people arguing, as I just now said, just as simple as, uh, say, hey, man, y'all, y'all, come, can I talk to you for? You'd be surprised and I said, this one second can de-escalate something just like that. One person stepping in, just like that, but you got to be, we're not juries, remember, we talking to that person and the other peacemaker that already been trained once, they see that I got that one, they trained, they already got the other one. And we done already de-escalated, so I'm talking to them and we going to take them into conflict resolution, conflict resolution, right then and there, have them thinking. I ask, hey, man, you got a son? You got kids? See, they get to thinking, oh, man, I got a nine-year-old, too. Man, we really got to, we need to start thinking, man, because we can't, I mean, stuff like that. That's how, that's what we do.
Mm-hmm.
So it's real, but you got to know how to deal with the psyche of an individual or whether he may just be, he's going to come down. He's going to come down. So is this an art tool, but every de-escalation is different. And if we sense like with, with the gun situation, unless it's just a spur of the moment, we call the police. We, we're not just going to jump in front of somebody shooting, so we calling the police, but we there. And my guys are already known, it's snap pictures, record, just that, whatever, we got something. So, but it took place, at least if some do transpire, we got the culprit that's doing it, everything, we got something.
Yeah. Thank, thank you for that. I, I think it's important for people to hear that.
Yes.
And, and I think it's important, too, that you, you don't send somebody out on their own. You make sure that they, there's at least a partner or, or a group of people.
Right.
Um, because that makes a difference, too. Um, so, you know, I, I'm excited and encouraged to hear about, you know, I think Lansdowne is a really important place to start.
Yes.
Um, and the reason I say that is because when you add the, the number of incidents that occur, whether they've been a year apart or two weeks apart, it's the intensity of that stays with people.
Yes.
And, and the trauma of that stays with people. And there are so many children, there are so many parents, there are so many, it's, it's multi-generational there. And, um, I, I can't say how many of the conflicts start there and how many come in.
Mm-hmm.
And occur there. I think it's, it's a combination of those things.
Right.
But, um, I think that's an important place to start.
Yes.
And then, I, I would suggest that, um, as soon as we, we get this funding to you, that we set a, a date for you all to come back and, and share your outcomes with the commission, with council. And then, um, there are, there are sources of funding.
Right.
There always are.
Right.
We, we'll just work to find those.
Right.
Because we want you to be successful.
Right.
And this is a way to pilot that, um, that hotspot area. And I'd like to say we only have one, but we have several in the city.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. Hunter.
Sean, we got another question for you.
Yeah, yeah, let me, just one more quick question, Miss Hunter. You, you applied for the gun violence, um, mini-grant, correct?
No.
No, ma'am.
You did. For the violence interruption.
The violence interruption?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So you, okay. I just wanted to make sure you, you applied for the right one, so you get the right funding.
Yes.
Yeah, they do.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. We're now down to item D. Madam Clerk, is that the hearing of citizens upon public matters?
Yes, sir.
Are there any citizens signed up?
Um, we have two citizens.
Okay.
Pastor Patricia Johnson. I don't see her. Okay. And then the other speaker is Philip Robinson.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Uh, yes, I'm Philip Robinson. I'm here on behalf of Paradise Cathedral and Bishop Jase, Joseph Mayo. And I'm here in regards to the, uh, gun violence, uh, grant that he wants me to speak on behalf of. Um, I'm, first time, so, uh, it's a, our church, Paradise, has concerns regarding money being re, uh, rescinded for our youth based on a lie. Uh, because of a, a disgruntled board member, funded from the, uh, funding for the Against Gun Violence Grant was rescinded based on a lie. A lie saying that Paradise Cathedral does not want young people downstairs in the church, which also that's, it's not true. Uh, Paradise, we, we, we love the children. We, me, my wife have children there every Sunday. She's the, um, I'm sorry. Um, she's the youth director. So, you know, we do so much with the youth, you know, my wife does. And that, uh, with, with the grant that was rescinded, you know, it really put a damper on us. And that, uh, you know, we don't know basically why it was rescinded. It was basically said that, uh, you know, we didn't want young kids there. That's totally untrue. You know, um, Bishop Mayo, he always opened the doors up for anybody and everybody. Anybody that knows Bishop Mayo, know that he's a loving, kind man. You know, he does whatever he can. And we basically was, wanted to get this funding resubmitted. Um, the program was in operation prior to funding being available through the, uh, Against Gun Violence Grant. The false accusations only came when Nicole Ross was asked to leave. Okay? And the thing is that Ms. Ross, she's on the board of, uh, TAP, you know, and, um, so, uh, the false accusations only came when she, when she was asked to leave. It was then the Grant of Paradise Cathedral Development, uh, Center was, uh, re, rescinded, which it was, because, uh, someone from the board member here, uh, came and spoke to Bishop Mayo in regards to it. And we asking that, you know, like even Mr. Hunter said, we're not professional, uh, grant writers, you know, so that we're asking for a grant to help out with the youth, to reopen up our doors, to get our facility, uh, back done so that we could help the youth out. And with the gun violence that, um, it, it, it's hard because, you know, like, like Mr. Hunter said, the youth are dying here. And, you know, and that, uh, I want to say this, this is personally coming from me, that, uh, you know, I know that God oversees everything, but you know, the thing is, you the committee, you the overseers of Virginia, you know. And I, and I'm gonna say this, that a lot of this falls back on you guys, because for y'all being overseers of Virginia, you know, only person that I know in here is Mayor Lee. That's the only person that I know. That no one I see come out in the community to talk to anyone, to find out what's going on in the community. Only time when I really see anybody, if something happens, then I see you on the news. You don't come out and talk to the people in the community. You don't, to me, I, I know that you're concerned about what's going on with the youth. But I feel personally that if you come out into the community and talk to the residents, you could know more of what's going on than getting a telephone call or hearing it from a police radio. Y'all need to get out and talk to the community, find out what's going on. Uh, police response is slow. Y'all have all this grant money. Y'all have all these facilities that's closed up, these empty buildings, that you could take some of this grant money, redo some of these buildings, and make many police stations. And have police in certain locations. And a lot of this stuff could stop, you know. I, I, like I say, I, I feel that everybody in here, you know, I know y'all love Virginia because you're still here. You know, but this grant money, you know, as I'm getting off a little bit, but, uh, this grant money that was taken from the church, you know, it, we trying to get that back. We're trying to make sure that we help these children out. We want to open up our doors to make sure that they're not lingering out here dying in the streets. And, and that, uh, like I say, with what took place of the, uh, money being descended, uh, rescinded back due to the fact that Ms. Nicole Ross was asked to leave the church, I think that's something that should not have failed back on us. That, that's why. And like I say, everybody that knows Bishop Mayo knows that, you know, he would have not done anything to push any child out in the street. That's not his character. Anybody that truly know this man, know that that's not something that he would not do. And we're asking the committee to reconsider the grant that was given to, uh, Paradise Cathedral. So, that's more that, all that we have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, we're not aware of it. Mr. Collins, can you speak to some of you?
Sure. Um, when we were reviewing the grants, um, and anyone who had a potential conflict of interest on the Gun Violence Prevention Commission recused themselves from the review process. So they were not involved at all in that process. Uh, we were made aware that, um, the, and the grant that Paradise Cathedral Development Center, or, yeah, Development Center submitted was a very collaborative grant. It was, it was a strong grant. Um, it brought in a lot of partners. Um, and a portion of that was to utilize the space there at the church. And we received word that, um, um, at the time we were reviewing the grant, that Paradise Cathedral, uh, did not want to make the space available. Now, I'm, I'm telling you what was communicated to us, and I've heard two different stories.
Mm-hmm.
So there seems to be a conflict at one level.
Yes, it is.
With people, uh, involved with the church and previously involved with the church. So that's something that I think the, those, those individuals need to work out amongst themselves to resolve that conflict. Um, I have had conversations with Bishop Mayo.
Okay.
And I think there are a long, a lot of strong components to the grant that certainly could be resubmitted at some point and reconsidered. And it would be important to bring those to the Gun Violence Prevention Commission.
Okay.
Uh, we will have another cycle of the mini-grants, which will, I know is not the extent of what the full of the grant was requesting. But, uh, it would be a place to start. And I, I think probably this, early this fall, the next round of those will get out. And we'll also say this, for people in the community who are looking to do initiatives, there is, all, there are always opportunities for state funds. And we are always looking at how we can access those and put those to work in the community. So, um, there are always possibilities. And I would encourage you, um, at the Paradise Cathedral Development Center, to revisit the grant, to look at what you can do now, uh, to look at the pieces of it, and then to resubmit that to us, um, so that we can look for possible ways to, to fund some or all of it in the future. And I would say that to any organization that didn't receive funding this time around. It doesn't mean, it may mean no right now, but it doesn't mean no for all time. Uh, it's just, we, we had applications for over a million dollars.
Yes.
And we had five hundred thousand dollars. So, no one received the full amount they requested. And, and many received less than they requested. And unfortunately, we weren't able to fund all of them. But I would encourage you to, to do two things. One is to work to resolve the conflict between the persons involved.
Mm-hmm.
And the second is to take another look at that grant and then, uh, resubmit a proposal, uh, to the commission so that we can look at that and see what funding options there are, uh, in the future.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. And, um, and my other concern, as I, as I was saying, uh, in regards to the, the total gun violence itself, that, uh, about the young people dying, you know, um, what are y'all, other than, you know, having the peacemakers out here, what are the committee planning on doing to really stop this gun violence? Because as I said, you know, you have so many abandoned buildings. You have abandoned building right there across the street on Twenty-Fourth Street from the Family Dollar. You have abandoned building up on, on J Avenue, little bit where, uh, it's a abandoned building up there. But, uh, how come y'all won't take those buildings, renovate them, make them many police stations? Not just northwest, you could find buildings northeast, southeast. Open up them buildings, renovate them buildings, make many police stations. Then you don't have to have your main headquarters downtown. You don't have to have the police department directly coming from downtown. You could, you could shorten the response time by opening up or renovating buildings that's abandoned. You know, I know that, uh, Mr. Hunter said y'all short on police officers. But if you do different, I'm from Ohio, if you do different precincts, open up different buildings, make many police stations, you could shorten the response time. You may be able to cut down on some of the violence.
Ms. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we don't normally speak during this time, but I did want to say to, uh, Mr. Robinson, that we did have over twenty-seven, uh, grants that were approved. And you asked, what are we doing? These organizations are doing something to interrupt the balance, and that's why they were approved. So there's multiple organizations out there, um, not just the peacemaker. There's numerous organizations who are trying to do the exact same thing that you're doing. And I will also say that, um, most of us are in the community. I just said earlier that I was in Lansdowne doing voter registration and, and, and asking people to get COVID tests. So we're, you may not see us, because we're not everywhere, but we're out in the community. So I would just say that that's not a true statement. But I did want you to know that we're doing something other than what, um, what you, Mr. Hunter presented tonight. That's not the only thing. There were twenty-seven applications with numerous programs that we're hoping will help this community. And I do appreciate you coming forward. And, um, I do echo everything that Mr. Collins said, that you certainly welcome to come back and apply, because I'm sure you have a good program, and maybe it just wasn't written the way it should have been written. If you need some help, and maybe there's a way we can find someone to help with the grant, maybe that was a flaw in that, you know, that could be easily fixed. So we're really, you know, happy to, to help in any way we can.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me say also, like the idea, I've always been a proponent of that, of satellite officers for police officers.
Yes.
We just haven't been in the position, I think, to do that. But hopefully as we grow, we'll put a lot of those things on the table, because I think this is an ongoing, uh, issue that we have in terms of getting our police officers, community police, and getting them out in the, in the community. And so, uh, I don't want to take anything off the table. I think that there may come a time when we do, or in a situation, to create that, there's some cause to that. But, uh, nothing is off the table.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate your, appreciate your thoughts on that. And, and I'm familiar with, uh, Bishop Mayo and his work.
Yes.
As a matter of fact, uh, back some years ago, he created that space down there and we were feeding the homeless.
Yes.
And people were sleeping down there. So I, I do thank him for doing that. And so, uh, the council itself has, uh, you know, we have a committed that's gone to, and the Gun Violence Task Force makes those decisions. Uh, but we'll probably in the future, uh, become much more, much more aware of things and how that operates. So thank you for coming here tonight. And those are some things that we can look into as we go forward.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other council member have any comments they want to make? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Madam Clerk, are there any more speakers?
No, sir.
All right. Okay. Uh, all right. Uh, there being no further business. To come before the council tonight, uh, the council, this council meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.